Okay. The first item on our agenda is presentation of awards proclamations, recognition of our mentor teachers for the school year. Unfortunately, it appears that there's some conflict with our staff who are unable to attend this evening. I do want to recognize them and have Mr. Ferisi just say a few words about the program for any public listening in, and we're going to reach back out and see if maybe the first meeting in May works out better because we would obviously love to have them in and recognize their work for the year. Mr. Ferisi?
Certainly. So, we're always very proud of our mentor program. We have outstanding mentor teachers here in the Newington Public Schools who are certified mentors through the State Department of Education in the team program. And what they do on an annual basis is work with our new staff, also can work with student teachers alike, and support them through the very many changes and curriculum implementation processes that new staff have to go through when they're either brand-new to teaching here in the Newington Public Schools or have transferred from another district to join us here in the Newington Public Schools. So, we're always just so thrilled that we have so many staff who are available to be mentors in Newington. We continue to support the program and provide the training necessary for our mentors to maintain their certification and are thankful that they continue to work with our new educators to help support their transition here in Newington. We've had great success throughout the program. The very many hours that these folks put in on a weekly basis, monthly basis, and annual basis is outstanding, and we think that due to our strong mentorship program, that is why we have such a strong retention of educators here in Newington. So, I couldn't be more delighted for the folks who choose to be mentors and thankful for all their participation and work. And for our mentees, they do outstanding work too. They continue to help us grow and, you know, be the very best educators here in Newington Public Schools.
Do any board members have any comment on this abbreviated version of our recognition of the mentor teachers?
Wait till they hear.
Mrs. Stroes.
I'll do it. I'll wait till they hear.
And I do hope that we can get them at one of our next meetings. We will now move on to item C on our agenda, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phones are open at 860-665-8736. Seeing no public and there's no one on the phones as of yet, we'll move on to standing committee information items. The one committee that met recently was the Executive Committee on March 28th. That meeting was about the calendar, which is on our agenda later, so we'll save that discussion for then. And we have our student representatives with us tonight to give a report. Matt and Prachi, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with athletics. Newington's own Robert Nagy of the NHS Boys Swimming Team was one of the New Bern Harold athletes of the week for the week of March 26th. Specific to the high school, the National English Honor Society is holding a book drive until April 6th. The books will be donated to families in the community and patients at Hartford Hospital. The New Haven Field Office of the FBI and the Yale University Police Department will be having a future law enforcement youth academy from July 15th until the 21st for high school students who are interested in law enforcement.
Five students, including myself, will be representing Newington High School at the Connecticut Music Educators Association All-State Music Festival from April 19th through the 21st at the Connecticut Convention Center. DECA will be attending ICDC, short for International Career Development Conference, to compete nationally. Eleven of the 14 finalists from Newington will be going down to Atlanta, Georgia to compete. In addition, a few other DECA members will have the opportunity to join them on their trip to attend the Thrive Conference. And then for Martin Kellogg, Martin Kellogg's Drama Club will be presenting Annie this week from April 5th through the 7th in their auditorium. To purchase tickets, please visit Martin Kellogg's website or get them at their box office. That's all. Very brief report tonight.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for our student reps right now? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to other business information items. First, we have a presentation about collaboration between the public schools and Lucy Robins-Wells Library. This was a request from a board member a few meetings back, just to kind of see what we're doing and how we're leveraging one of the town's greatest assets, our library. So, we're welcoming tonight with us Lisa Mastin, who's the Director of Lucy Robins-Wells, Karen Benner, who is the Assistant Director at Lucy Robins, Maureen Plord, who is one of our high school media specialists, Jessie Dalton, who is the John Patterson Media Specialist, and Jay Salerno, our Director of Educational Technology. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys for a little presentation, and then we will have some time to discuss.
Thank you very much, Josh.
Okay, so I'm going to start tonight. I want to thank you for inviting us, and we're happy to do this, and we appreciate all the cooperation and collaboration we do do with the Newington Public Schools. We've been collaborating and had cooperation over many years. Some of the things that we do, we have planning sessions or strategic planning, both for the library and for the friends of the library, and staff from the Newington Public Schools have been involved or invited to those. We also are invited usually on an annual basis to the Board of Education's planning sessions as well, which we always appreciate. We do a lot of collaborative programming with these schools. We have four programs for preschoolers, for school-aged children, for teens, and for parents. And our library staff will work with the schools to see what the needs of the schools are, to come up with some programming ideas, collaboration, and also to schedule them, which is a big deal. Some examples of these programs are, they do monthly storytimes for the preschoolers who are in the elementary schools, school visits where the students are invited to the library. We also do book talks by librarians, and we, I'm going to bring this down, sorry, annual spring kindergarten orientation panel, which is actually coming up, I believe, next week. It was rescheduled due to snow. We do about, we have about 150 programs, collaborative programs every year that reach about 8,000 students. So, of the 700-plus programs the library's doing every year, we're doing 150 with the schools, which I think is pretty amazing. We also do, this isn't here, but we volunteer opportunities for students. We work with the National Honor Society, the Key Club, and with the Workforce Developmental Department to have students, give them opportunities to volunteer in the library. And we actually, this year, have a great, great group of teen volunteers. They come and they help with large programs, and children love it when the teens are there to help out in a program. They really enjoy having them there as well. We also do have done grant writing with the schools. We've had staff from the Newington Public Schools work with us on grants, and in fact, we have a grant that, well, it started off as a grant in 1999. It was called the Van Grant, and we worked with the schools to get transportation for daycares and preschool children to come to the library every Friday for a storytime. And we had a year, it was a year grant program, but it's continuing today, which is wonderful. And new teacher orientation, boy, it's coming up to that, it will be coming up to that time of year soon. In August, we have a new teacher orientation where new teachers are invited to the library. Staff from the children's department, teens, and adult will meet with the new teachers, give them a tour of the library, and talk about the resources that we have to offer them. The other thing that they can get is a new teacher card, and it allows them to check out materials for six weeks, which is double what the normal time is, and also they can use databases, library databases, within their classrooms. And then sharing of resources, we work with the schools, library staff will work with the school staff to talk about the curriculum and what the needs are, and then we do purchase print materials and electronic materials that will support the curriculum and help the teachers and the students. And we are, when you talk about like the nutmeg books, we just purchased multiple copies of print, but this year we actually purchased a lot more copies of the digital formats as well for the students to have. And the other thing that we have been able to do is the high school's really been good about sending us materials in the summer. Because their library's closed, they send us books that the teens might be able, want to read in the summer, and then we just put them into our system and people can check them out.
So, I'm going to be speaking on the collaboration that's happening on the elementary level. I'm Jessie Dalton, the Media Specialist at John Patterson. The elementary schools work with the public library to set up field trips for the K4 classrooms so that students can get library cards, they can meet the public librarians and kind of strengthen or form a relationship with them, so when they go back, they know who they can talk to to ask for books. The staff also goes as well so that they're building those relationships. Furthermore, the public librarians are invited to the school at the end of the year, in June, for a summer reading assembly to get the kids really excited about summer reading. And that is really important because it helps the students maintain reading stamina and reading skills and just that love and joy of reading. You know, we have that two-month period, and we certainly don't want the kids to lose that excitement. And they do an amazing job so that when the kids come back in the fall, they have been reading all summer, they're still excited, and we actually have a celebration assembly, and you can see on the side here, there's a juggler. That was an assembly that Lucy Robins-Wells brought into the schools to celebrate the summer reading, and the kids get certificates, and they can, we get to celebrate all the minutes that they read. The school librarians are also invited to give book talks, and we're actually just getting ready for that. I know that Pat Pierce is going to be coming to Patterson in June to talk about the elementary and intermediate nutmegs with our second, third, and fourth graders, but that library will also go to the middle schools as well to talk about the nutmegs. And I know that Lucy Robins-Wells purchases copies of the nutmegs, we purchased copies as well. And the students are encouraged to vote for their favorite books. Nutmeg voting, I believe, opened this week, April, it's this entire month. I guess, like, I can't even believe it, it's just like, snowed the other day, so. So, nutmeg voting, and they're encouraged to vote either at our school, and this is students in second, third, and fourth grade, as well as in the middle and the high school. And they also, Lucy Robins-Wells, I know, will purchase extra books for the Battle of the Books, which happens at both of the middle schools in town, so a lot of support there. There's also support for the importance of literacy, and we have, the public library comes to the schools' open houses, and that's a great opportunity for parents that are new to the community to learn about many of the programs that were previously described that Lucy Robins-Wells does have. And one of the most exciting things that the library collaborates with the public schools is the Sliva Author Visit, which is in November, and it's hosted at NHS, and students in grades three and four get to attend this amazing author. This year, they had Jeff Mack, and our kids were just, they loved it, it was so wonderful. And the transportation is provided by Newington Public Schools. And then after they attend, the author will go to the students, or go to the middle schools and visit with the students in grade fifth and sixth grade as well.
Hi, I'm Karen Benner, I'm the Assistant Library Director. The Newington Public Schools and the library collaborate each year to offer the Preparing for Kindergarten program. The program is held at the library in the spring for parents of children that are entering kindergarten in the fall. It is coordinated by staff in the Curriculum and Instruction Department at the Newington Public Schools, and the panel is made up of a children's librarian, a kindergarten teacher, a human services rep, and a representative from the Transportation Department. The program offers information to parents about what to expect in a day in the life of a kindergartner. It offers transportation information and resources available at the library and at Human Services. While the parents are in this program, there's also a storytime that's held by librarians and staff from the Southfield Children's Center. The other thing that the library does is we subscribe to a number of databases that are used extensively by the schools. Pebblego, which is a primary research database, has 10 different modules that can be accessed remotely through, I think it's one general username and password, which makes for easy access from the classroom or from the media center in the schools. We also subscribe to Scholastic's Book Flicks and Tumblebooks, which are digital book databases. Both are accessed remotely by using a Newington library card number. So, teachers and school librarians can use their library card number from their teacher account that Lisa mentioned earlier about to log in from school. And lastly, Overdrive is a digital service that's offered by the library that lets you borrow free eBooks and audiobooks by downloading to your device, and all you need for that is a library card. So, I think it was last year, the library and the school collaborated to make the Overdrive app available and accessible to students' Chromebooks, which means that they can download directly to their devices. So, I think that's been a pretty big hit.
Yeah. The kids absolutely love it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maureen Plord, I'm the High School Library Media Specialist, and at the secondary level, we also partner with the public librarians in a variety of ways. I've actually worked with Karen when she was a teen librarian, and we're fortunate to have Bailey, who's been there for several years now, and is just wonderful to work with, so I'll tell you a few things that we do together. We're coming up right now on the time when we begin to collaborate on our summer reading lists, and what we do with this is get together with the teen librarians, and we start to exchange lists. We try to balance lists, we create grade-level lists, we organize by genre, we get a balance of fiction and nonfiction, books for adults that may also appeal to high school students, and we organize those, we publish those in a brochure and make that available to students in the high school. In addition to that, we create and deliver presentations with our public library counterparts. It looks different depending on the year. We've done things like face-to-face assemblies, where we'll do either a grade-level assembly, maybe even a whole-school assembly for a grade level. We also have created videos together with the public librarians, and then we send those out to the classrooms, and students can watch those. We've also done digital book talks. So, any of the digital products that we create with the public library, we will mount the links on the teen library website, as well as our high school website or middle school websites as appropriate. You've heard a little bit about book talks that the public library provides. One of the things that they do at the middle school level is, the public librarians have worked together with the Grade 8 English Language Arts teachers in coming in and providing classroom-level book talks, sort of matching literature to the curriculum. And what's really nice about this is that at the Grade 8 level, students do not receive direct instruction from library media. So, this is a way that the public library can actually directly support literacy in those classrooms, which really helps out. You heard a little bit about Battle of the Books. One of the other things that the public library does is the children's librarian is involved in judging the Battle of the Books when it gets to the townwide level. So, that's the picture up at the top, the students being judged. Finally, one of the things that I really like to do is, we run a book club at the high school, it meets monthly after school, and I co-facilitate that with Bailey from the public library. And one of the, one of the things that shows kind of how this collaboration works really well is that in order to get an author visit from Ellen Hopkins, a popular young adult author, we ended up sort of pooling our resources because the buy-in for the author visit was to purchase 10 copies of a title by the author. So, the public library purchased five, we purchased five, and we were able to get the visit, and then we coordinated it with the technology at the high school to Skype in with her, and that's the picture. At the bottom, you see, you see the public librarian's back, and that's at the high school. Excellent. So, the second thing that I really wanted to talk about because I think this really shows how we work to get the most out of our respective collections, is the resource coordination that we do. In terms of digital resources, both the public library and the school libraries heavily depend on the databases and eBooks provided by the state of Connecticut, and so we get those at no cost, and it forms sort of like a core foundational collection of limited eBooks and then probably 15 or so general databases. So, then what we can do is leverage the digital budget that we have for resources by then really targeting those eBooks and databases that are going to support, you know, our individual missions, you know, at the, at the public library, their mission is a little bit different from the, the school library mission. But we also can target those databases that will support research needs that are within our curriculum. So, it really helps us to leverage that, and we really do complement one another in terms of our collections. One of the other things that we do is, we have direct links where appropriate on our high school lib guides, which are our research guides, so we will link directly to some of the databases that Lucy Robins-Wells itself subscribes to. And as a matter of fact, yesterday, I was up in an 11H class kind of showing them advanced search features using one of the databases that Lucy Robins-Wells subscribes to, it's called Literary Reference Center Plus, is something that we couldn't afford to do. So, we definitely use that to leverage our budget. And the one thing about that is that it does require each student to have a Lucy Robins-Wells library card number to use it. So, we did organize a drive for students to get their library cards, so we tried to facilitate that and let them know the importance of all of the things that they have access to through that library card. As far as print collections go, at the high school, we regularly borrow book discussion sets from our, essentially not Lucy Robins-Wells collection, it's our regional library resource centers. We use the Willimantic and the Middletown Library Resource Center to get these, and they are delivered to Lucy Robins-Wells, so Lucy Robins-Wells sort of facilitates the delivery of these things, and that's through the Deliver-It CT program. At the middle school, I know that they have borrowed from the collection, I think it's, I don't know which grade it is right now, but they use their Literature Circle set, so it supplements the collection of books that they have at the middle school. And then teachers and library media specialists can request collections of materials on specific subjects, mostly nonfiction, I would imagine, which are curated by librarians at Lucy Robins-Wells, collected, and then sent over to the schools so that they can augment the school library collections. Finally, one of the things that we do as part of our collection management protocol is that as materials are wheeded from the school bookshelves, we take whatever we believe would be useful and appropriate and send it over to Lucy Robins-Wells Book Sale. And then, in turn, we have also received transfer materials, items that are no longer useful for the public library, may have use at one of the school libraries. I know I received a couple of sets of print reference materials that, for literary research, that were no longer appropriate. I think they had digital resources, and so we took some of those print resources into our library to make them available to students.
The library has been working with the Transition Academy, especially on special projects, and one of the ones that we did recently was the Little Free Library. It's a small structure that was on library property, and the students at the Transition Academy helped, working with our staff in Home Depot, they designed the Little Free Library, they helped build it and paint it, and then we had it mounted. And the Little Free Library is a place where, it's like, basically, the library's always open because you can go there, you can take a book, and then you can return the book whenever you would like, and it's actually nationally registered, so we're on a map if somebody's looking for a place to be able to get a book at a Little Free Library. We did recently have to take it down just temporarily to get ready for the town hall construction that will soon be coming. We've also worked with the students at the Transition Academy and Home Depot's community, their community team too. They actually helped us put the original garden that's on the butterfly garden that's on the property, and then they've come and helped past few summers to get it ready. That as well is going away unfortunately, so we'll come up with a different project. But the one thing we did start this past year as well is a new program, it's called Special Friends Get Together, and students from the Transition Academy in Newington and Weathersfield, and adults from Buckingham Services, they come, we have a monthly program from them, for them to come into the library, and it's really a chance for them to socialize and collaborate on projects. One of the projects they've done recently is they did kindness rocks for their library garden, but it's a really great program. We get at least 60 to 80 students each time, and they have a really good time talking to each other and working on projects, so it's been really rewarding.
The Educational Technology Department also has a strong relationship with Lucy Robins-Wells, and Karen and I will talk about that. Probably our biggest event over the last two years has been the Hour of Code kickoff. Each year, code.org sponsors a week of coding where you want to expose all students across the district to an Hour of Code at least during the week, and we do that within the district, but we have decided also over the last two years to have an Hour of Code kickoff event. We've had over 60 people each year from all ages, from preschool to senior citizens, visit us on the Friday night before the Hour of Code Week. One mystery we have yet to solve is that we've been competing against Santa coming to Newington every single year. I just don't understand which is more important, Santa or coding. But it's been a great, great experience. We've had our NHS Student Tech Support facilitate all of it, so we're just standing back and watching parents and kids code for an hour. I think this year, we extended much more than an hour, but it's a great, great event.
The library offers a program for adults called Tech Troubleshooting with Teens. We collaborate with the student tech support members at the high school to offer technology help on a wide range of issues. People bring their devices and questions to the program, and tech support students work one-on-one with adults to help troubleshoot problems. Some of the, some examples of that would be, you know, an issue with a cellphone, iPads, questions about social media, e-reader issues, tablets, iPods, email, and the program has really been successful, and it really is a nice way to connect teens and adults in the community. Newington High School's yearbook, The Sequin, has always been part of the library's collection. The yearbooks are located in our public stacks at the library, and they're heavily used, so it's easy for them to get damaged or go missing. Newington Public Schools and the library each have a collection of these yearbooks, and the state of Oklahoma, through the Oklahoma Correction Industries, offers libraries free digitizing of yearbooks by providing two sets of yearbooks on DVD. So, back in 2016, I believe, the library and the schools got together to send all of the yearbooks from 1938 forward to OCI to be digitized. Ones that the library didn't own were filled in by the schools, and there were quite a few that we did not have. The yearbooks are now available online through both the school website and as a link on the library website, and we will continue to do this annually.
Of course, we have to start looking forward in what we're going to do in the future with Lucy Robins-Wells as an Educational Technology Department. And as we all know, the Smart Bus was launched this fall, and now moving forward, we're going to start planning out events for not only the spring and the summer with Lucy Robins-Wells, where we're going to have some technology experiences via the Smart Bus moving forward.
We're also hoping to work with Chris Kerr and his Computer Science Technology students at the high school to possibly showcase projects that they've created during the year at the library. We had also talked about a year-end project for the students to work on, which could include something like designing an app for the library.
Questions?
Thank you all so much for that very bright presentation. I'll open it up for board questions and comments on the presentation. Mr. Brandon?
So, first of all, yesterday I had to go to the Patterson PTO meeting. And I told my daughter I was going to the Patterson PTO. She's like, "Where is it?" I said, "It's in the library. That's where it always is." "Are you going to see Ms. Dalton?" "Yes, I'm going to see Ms. Dalton." "You better tell her I said hi." So I didn't see you yesterday, obviously. So I wouldn't be able to come home if I didn't say that. So, but thank you for helping my daughter and so many others learn to love to read. And I think that all of this collaboration is a great example of how we all come together in this town. And I think maybe some people thought there wasn't a collaboration. So it's great to see all the detail. The only other thing I have is maybe you could get Santa to do the coding with the kids.
Further questions, comments from board members? Dr. Collins?
I actually have a suggestion for you, Jay. I never thought I would use this information, but this winter, my grandchildren had Santa call them. There's an app. And if you can have the kids work on that, it fascinates them. So that'd be something to think about.
Thanks. I do have a, first, if we can get a copy to put onto our board website under Presentations or whatever, it's a great presentation for us to just have in the future, the PowerPoint. So that would be great. Do, do you guys, for our library folks, any idea how many community members come out on those nights troubleshooting with tech? I'm sure it varies, but...
It does vary. Some, we've had times when we've had three or four students and 10 to 15 adults. And then we've had times when we've been a little bit heavier on the student side and less adult. It's a drop-in program. So we really don't know ahead of time. So it's, it's a little bit of a balance, balancing act. But it, it's, it's worked out well. You know, there are times when people have to maybe wait a little bit to, to get their questions answered, but it's, it's been smooth. We really haven't had any issues. Can you think of anything else, Lisa?
No, just that you have to allow enough time, you know, 15 minutes to 30 minutes per person, I would say. And, you know, the adults, they really appreciate it. And I think the students have been so patient because it can be daunting sometimes, you know, because they might not understand. But you just want to give them, make sure that each person that comes has the time they need with the, the student.
And the students facilitate the organization. I don't do anything. I, I see that we're on an app together, and they say, "Okay, there's going to be a tech night. Who wants to volunteer?" And they all just volunteer. I just sit and watch. But it's interesting that for the, you know, the next couple of days after we have a tech night, I'm listening to the students on what problems they fixed.
Mr. Tufel?
How do you find out what nights the tech system is working?
It's in our, it's on our website, and it's also in our newsletter. It's usually a Thursday night. And I'm not sure there's like one, one a month, I think, right? Yeah.
And it usually starts at what time?
6:30, I believe. 6:30 to 7:30 or 6:30 to 8:00.
Thank you.
Mr. Vassella?
And again, I guess I want to thank both our, our media and technology staff and the Lucy Robins staff for being here. Because I do think that a lot of the collaboration that goes on is overlooked. It's not obvious to the people in the community. And when you hear everything that's going on, you realize what a great collaboration there is. So I thank both sides very much.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. First, I've been very impressed with all of the programs that you have in place. But it caused me to ask a question. I see what the library's doing for us and the community and insisting, is there anything we're doing to help the library?
Absolutely. I mean, the, just even the, the communication, I think, to know what is going on with the schools, what the needs of the schools are. I mean, part of the collection we want to build is going to support what the community needs. So that certainly would be school, school-aged children or, you know, early literacy. That's huge as well, to know what's coming up, but also to have the resources for parents. So I think just being able to talk and going to the schools and talking to the teachers or talking to the students, developing those relationships to get the kids to come in or to go to our website to use the resources. So I think it's huge that we are talking, that we are doing things together, especially with technology now, that's new, having them come to the library. And actually, it allows the adults that go to these programs to see what the students are doing. And I mean, a lot of the adults that go to this Hour Code, they want to know what it is because they're hearing about it in the community. So having it at the library, they come there, but they also get to see what these kids are doing in school because they might not understand that exactly.
One additional, is there anything else we can be doing to help the library?
I don't know, probably. I think if we continue to develop the relationships and, you know, think outside the box as to what we can do together, I think we are doing that now. You're seeing some different kinds of programming that we're doing. And I think that the more that we can get into the schools or you can come to the library to show people, like with the Smart Bus, if you come to the library, it lets people see what the schools are doing as well. I think that it's a win-win for both of us.
I can speak at least from the elementary level that, you know, we do a lot of talking up the library, just knowing that the children are the most impressionable, at least on our level. And if we want them to be excited about learning, you know, we do, I spend a lot of time on your website, you know, just showing them the different resources and showing them, you know, how to get there. You know, I spent the last few weeks of school giving specific lessons on how to use some of those tools so that they, when they go to the public library, they don't have to be a burden on you guys. You know, one of our focuses, at least on the elementary level and on the middle and high school level as well, is making sure that we are creating a generation of young people who are just adept to be able to use any kind of public institution, whether it's a public library or a college library, you know, or, you know, even if they go on and they're working in a business, a lot of businesses will have libraries as well so that they know how to navigate those different sites. We spend a lot of time making sure they have those skills. You know, and I do specific lessons on showing them how to use the Lucy Robins Wells website. I do specific lessons on showing them how to log into Overdrive so that they know how to use those tools. And I know that my, the other three elementary librarians do that as well. We've also created flipped classrooms so that those students have videos so that if they forget over the summer, they can just re-watch that video so that they can then use their devices, the Chromebooks, to get access to those materials.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Braverman?
When I first got on the board, so that was about 10 years ago, I was the library liaison. I'm not, was there, I still get your minutes and the agendas. So I'm not sure if that's changed, but I think it would be a good relationship to re-initiate because having somebody go to your meetings, I learned a ton of that stuff all the time. So I think maybe that would be something to bring back officially or unofficially, that we have somebody come back and report back to us and report to them.
Are you putting your name in the ring?
I'll put my name in the ring. Why not?
Mr. Brandon?
Really quick, Mr. Schnur, if you could talk about maybe some of the upcoming plans for the Smart Bus? I know, you know, it took a lot to get it, and obviously you can't just start everything up. You got to plan what you want to do. Are there any ideas that you could share that we might be able to look forward to?
Absolutely. We have one event coming up with Martin Caleb Mills School, the after-school program, the F-U-T-P. I forget what the, that Kathy Leslie runs. We're going to be doing an event there. We're kind of going to roll it all out so all the students at all the schools get to experience the bus before the end of the year.
Maker Faire Patterson?
Maker Faire Patterson will be coming up. And then we'll start planning some events for the summer with Lucy Robins Wells.
Mrs. Stroes?
I just want to say thank you for working so well together as a mom of three kids. My kids look forward to the end-of-year book talks, so they get excited. And I know that it is a collaboration between, and this goes through, through middle school. I assume high school will be the same, but, so phenomenal job. I just want to say thank you.
Mrs. Seem?
I too just want to say I'm impressed with the collaboration that you shared tonight because it is, it is enlightening. Because I know that there always is collaboration, but you don't really ever really know what it all is about. And it was, I was impressed with what you do in the collaboration. And thank you for all you do for the community and for what you do working with the schools and vice versa, because I think it's a great collaboration. Thank you.
Mrs. Maraca?
Just to add to Mr. Brandon's question, the school district was fortunate enough to secure a grant from the state so that we do have plans for the Smart Bus, which would include the hiring of an educational technology teacher and a reading teacher that would travel through the summer into different neighborhoods of Newington and be able to bring technology and literacy to our students.
Dr. Collins?
There is, I mean, the, the Smart Bus actually, for those of you who don't know, was actually started as what was going to be a project with the library as a bookmobile. And so, we actually do still have space on the bus for bookshelves, for books.
Mr. Sylvia, did you have something else? Okay. Anyone? Okay. I will just finish with thanking all five of you so much for your time putting together the presentation for us and also for your time this evening. We know it's hard to be out at night sometimes. And I would also just say, you know, we're kind of a level removed from the collaboration that obviously our, our teachers and staff are doing with the library. But if any of you ever think of anything that needs to be done on a board level, policy-wise, other, other than money for programming, which we do our best to try to provide, anything from a board level that we can do to support, you know, working with our library, because it is one of the greatest treasures in Newington. So please, you know, let Dr. Collins and the administration know, and we're happy to take up anything that benefits the students. So thank you all very much for coming out this evening. With that, we are going to move on to another riveting discussion involving our school calendar for the 2019-2020 school year. As I mentioned earlier, this is something that was talked about at the committee level a week ago. Mrs. Maraca led us through that discussion. And who would like, is it you or Mrs. Maraca to lead us through? Mrs. Maraca? I will let you lead the way. This was one of the easier discussions we've had at a committee level in my seven years.
Thank you, Mr. Schellmann. In the first two pages of item E2 is going to be the explanation of when holidays fall. And I'm assuming most of you have probably read that already when your packet came out last week. If you turn to the very last page, that is your school calendar for the year 2019 to And this, again, this evening is a discussion so that we won't be making any final plans. Our first correction, I'd want you to draw your eyes to April 2020. And it says numbers in the second row, it has the numeral seven, and that really should say PL. That is one of the Early Release P-Day, Professional Learning Days, which is why it's in orange. So if we can make that correction first. There are very limited changes to this calendar compared to your current calendar and the calendar for 2018-2019. As you know, the negotiation with AFSMI made a change about when certain holidays fall. They would get Christmas Eve Day as a holiday. And if you look at December 2019, you will see that it is one of the longer holidays so that you have, the 23rd could have been a school day, but if we thought about who would arrive at the school on the 23rd, we figured it would be such a low turnout that it would not be a valuable instructional time. So you have from December 23rd through January 1st as that winter holiday that we've kept, we've made one change in February. Bless you. You will notice on February 14th, which connects with the, bless you, which connects with the weekend, we eliminated that Friday vacation day in February. And instead of having a five-day weekend, it's a four-day weekend. I did check, I was asked by the board chair to check to find out because there was a comment in this superintendent's report that it was a great opportunity for cleaning, but I was told that it was not a reason to not have school in session because cleaning would still occur. So that is staying there. We did eliminate one professional learning early release day that you will see in this year's calendar and in next year's calendar, which was an early release the Tuesday after Memorial Day. But because we have a four-hour PD day on Friday, we did remove that one, two-hour professional learning early release day. The final day for school tentatively, and I say that after this year, weather is Thursday, June 11th. So then we would add any inclement weather days. But other than that, your calendar has really remained very much the same with conferences, both in September for elementary and middle school, and then what we call sort of like the report card conferences for middle and high school because they're on quarters in November, in December for elementary because they're on trimesters, and then for everyone in March. And so, really, it's very similar to what you're accustomed to.
I was just start by saying that at our next meeting, I believe it'll be on for the 18th, will be when we actually vote on approving the calendar. So this is a two-meeting cycle for, for doing that. Anyone have any questions, comments, or discussion points on the calendar? I will say I don't like removing the fifth day of vacation from February as a personal preference, but it's not really based on anything. I just like having vacation. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. I didn't have any issues with the calendar that's presented. But a concept that I was reading about that's happening in other states in New England and such is that they've worked out a packet in case of snow days so that at the discretion of the teachers and the school systems, they could say, "All right, here's your snow packet" and not effectively lose a day of school or have to extend the school year. I didn't know if that's applicable or an opportunity for us to leverage.
Unfortunately, in the state of Connecticut, it is not. There is state law around the need for 180 school days, and that means you must be within the school facilities to accommodate those. But it is, I agree with you, it is common. In New Hampshire, where I conducted an NEAS and C visit, they still have what they call their Blizzard Bags. And it's just to keep students engaged in learning because obviously they may have a few more days, but it doesn't count toward their attendance days because it's non-instructional. They are working in some of the districts to actually reach out so that teachers are working and they're Skyping. But again, that would probably, unless the law changed, not meet the requirements for Connecticut.
I'm on the, actually on the committee to discuss this at the state level. And there's a group of superintendents who, who believe, as I do, that we need to get there. Unfortunately, as Mrs. Maraca said, there's a, there are a couple barriers that are not insurmountable. One is state law that requires the State Department to ease up on their, that ruling, if you will. Secondly, there needs to be a district like ours that has the one-to-one capability. We're there, so, but many districts are not, so they don't have the tools to do it. And then the third is the, there would need to be an agreement with the bargaining units over, over that work. So those three things, as I said, are not insurmountable. We are actually in a very good place to do that. If we could do it tomorrow, I would. I fully support that. I think we could do that from home. We could as a district. There are many districts we have to recognize that cannot. So I think the state's in that position right now. The biggest challenge is getting the states, the state to do it. As I said, I'm on a committee, and we are appealing to the legislature to introduce that legislation to relax the standards, if you will.
I would also, I would just say, and I wonder if this has come up at all, but in districts that do have a one-to-one like us and could do that kind of thing, what happens with students who don't? And I know there's not, I don't, we don't think that there's a ton of them in our district because of some study, some surveys we've done. But what about students who don't have internet access on a snow day?
All of those things need to be worked out, and it could be done through, a lot of the work could be done through Chromebooks, even offline.
Offline?
Yeah.
Mr. Brandon?
Question on the holidays. So I haven't looked at the upcoming calendar, but I imagine it is Veterans Day. Is that, are we moving forward now of having school every Veterans Day? That we're just expanding that program that we did essentially?
That was the, the contract that was negotiated between the town manager and AFSMI said that, that's why we are having school on Veterans Day.
Yep. And that contract goes through this? Yep. And that contract goes through this?
It's a four-year contract.
It's a four-year. So in that contract, they have Columbus Day off?
I don't recall if they do or not.
They do. Okay. I was just asking because I know that some districts have moved away from that day off, and then maybe you get Josh, your extra February day.
We have to, we have to make it sync because all of our custodians, everybody.
Right, no, I get that. If they're off, I get it. I was just wondering if.
Yeah, we can't be out of sync with the town on that.
I got you. Thank you.
And because of the incredible success from our schools this year doing Veterans Day, which was universally acclaimed, I'm excited and happy that it's going to continue being a school day. It's a great day to honor service. Further questions or support in adding back a February vacation day? Mrs. Dros?
I'm so sorry, Mr. Schollman, but I have to disagree with you on that. Only, and I'm going to tell you, even like the PD day, and I understand why we have it. You need to have a PD day somewhere before a long weekend. I can remember when my children were little and I couldn't leave them home alone. Having to take a Friday and a Monday off was very challenging. So I do support, and I know a lot of my people have always been like, why do we have this Friday off? So I understand what you're saying, but, and so I disagree with you on that one.
I get it. And that's some of the pushback I got at the committee level from everyone. I just really like vacations and I don't get to take a lot of them.
I plan on taking that Friday off.
You do?
Yeah, I'm going to take that Friday off.
Okay.
Valentine's Day.
Mr. Plord and Ms. Teve, do you have anything to add in regards to February vacation, maybe?
I was going to say this.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, if you look at December into January, it's a week and a half off, which is pretty nice. Sadly, I won't be here for that. And then in April, you get the Friday off before break, which is pretty nice. So I think that makes up for the one day that you're losing.
In this particular calendar, it does. Listen, if no one wants to agree with me, that's fine. This is how this goes. I should really start paying people before the meetings. Mr. Plord, anything different or you disagree as well?
I, I, I.
And this won't affect you either because you'll be graduating by then.
I'll be graduating as well, so I won't be there. But, you know, I think that given that, you know, if we can, you want to limit the amount of days put into June, we don't really need that Friday. We don't.
That's incredible. Listen, you know.
I'm just saying, you know. And she's right. It could get snowed out, you know. It's very possible.
Well reasoned, you know. There's not much for me to argue with. I'm still going to oppose the calendar, but that's just me. Any further questions or comments? And this will be an action item at our next meeting, I believe. So we will have more time to discuss anything if need be. Everyone good?
I have one other question. I saw that, and somebody else brought this up, I don't remember who, but about Columbus Day, I saw that that is still off. And I know that many states in the country have since stopped honoring Columbus Day as a day for a holiday, a vacation day. Is there anything on the state level that maybe Dr. Collins could tell us about, if anything, having to do with that or things like that?
Yeah, that is more, I believe, our district is AFSMI-related. So we have to stay in sync with the town because we wouldn't have any bus drivers or custodians or cafeteria workers or secretaries or, you know. So unless the teachers are willing to do all that stuff, pick you up, you know, drop you off, make you lunch, I think that might be a problem.
And I think what we've seen from surrounding districts is that it's, right now, it's just a district-by-district decision how to deal with that. Some towns feel one way. Hasn't really been a discussion for us at all. And we can't really be in school that day right now. Anything else? Okay. We will move on to a discussion item on the diesel fuel remediation project. Mr. Jakomos did prepare another updated statement for us on what's going on. There really hasn't been much of any change from a week ago. Mr. Jakomos, if you want to add anything?
Sure. Thank you. You know, as Mr. Schollman just said, there's been no tangible changes to the project, no changes to the anticipated reimbursement through the insurance. We still have a targeted date for payment for them sometime between April 25th and May 15th, you know, a four-to-six-week-out timeframe at this point. Last week, we requested to submit additional information from a site condition basis for the environmental consultant that's working for the insurance company. All that information went into them last Friday. I did send a follow-up communication today to just see if I could get an acknowledgement that they have everything. I have not received that yet, but I am, you know, 98% certain that we have satisfied all of their expectations for information. With the dollar value of claims and costs that we've incurred that are sitting in front of them, if they choose to honor the substantial portion, it'll max out our available money on the insurance program of $806,000 in additional revenue. One other development this week was the CTR Construction, which is the site contractor who's actually been doing all the digging and the remediation work, finally got caught up on their invoicing. So they're through March 25th on all of their work billed to us. So that creates an element of certainty for us as far as what are the ongoing costs while we're in kind of this transition and lull of any real activity happening. And this really is the biggest item for the board to pay close attention to. You know, last, about a week ago, we got the first two, and then a couple of days ago, we got the last two. And now we can see the picture of what one month of total costs are at this level activity. And it's actually up to $200,000 a month. And depending on the length of time it's going to take for the soil to be released to the project from other sources, it's a matter of how much more we're going to incur in just maintaining the holding plan. You know, for my purposes, for guiding the board, I have added in one month's worth of outlook here that it will not be until, say roughly, May 1st, when the filling of the site will start happening. I don't have any specific guidance from anybody about that other than my own judgment about things and the ability of a contractor to get ramped up once they get the go-ahead. So because of that $200,000 extra per month, it has pushed the overall project costs up a little bit. You know, we're still, I don't see a reason to jump to, you know, quick decisions on this, but certainly by the end of April, we have to have absolute certainty about the direction we're going for if there's going to be money set aside from the board operating budget to pay project expenses. That will need to be decided into what dollar amount compared to allowing us to, you know, just have an orderly closeout to the school year and make sure we're acquiring all those materials and resources that we're able to financially. Okay? To kind of walk everybody through the important details, if you just go to the bottom of Page 3, that talks to the costs of what a month of this level of work is. And right now, it's about $40,000 per week for labor costs to support what they call the de-watering operations to keep the site as dry as possible. So when they start filling it, it's not a quagmire. It'll fill quickly. They can do what they call compaction, which is getting it where the site won't sink into the future. And all of the related work to just doing the work, what they call lifts, which is maybe like a foot of soil at a time. And they just keep constantly going over and over until they bring it up to street level. So at $40,000 a week plus the routine costs for rentals of the equipment that's there, that's another $42,000 per month. So we're into April. We will be getting a bill for April rentals on this. And certainly if this clicks over into May, we would have to do the same thing again for setting aside money for May rentals plus however the project's winding up for the transition from CTR to the new contractor. So these are things the board just needs to keep in mind. And, you know, because of this, I have bumped up the overall project cost from 2.8 million to just over 3 million at this point.
I do just want to add, just before the meeting, I reached out to Carol Anis just to see if the town had any information about, sped up timelines. I talked to Lou last night. He wasn't sure. And they didn't have anything definitive to say. She was hopeful that it would be sooner rather than later, that we would have a definite idea of if the plan is going to be able to take place, but can't really give any more details because there's a lot of moving parts involved. And so we're just kind of sitting back and waiting and hoping that it speeds up a little bit.
And one other thing I did on the forecast was I actually advanced it one week. So I'm now including the current week in the cost forecast instead of being a week in a rear. I have a much better idea how to judge what those costs will be and if it's appropriate. So right now, I'm forecasting through the Sunday coming up, the 8th of April. So the next important thing to look at is the bottom line on Page 2, which shows estimated project status as of this coming Sunday. And we're at $595,000 in resources that need to be provided to the project to just pay for work that's been complete or incurred as of this coming Sunday. Excuse me. The maximum reimbursement we'll get through insurance is $806,000. So we would only have $200,000 beyond that to pay for additional expenses to fill the area as well as the final reconstruction of what the site needs to be in its finished form. And that would include the paving, providing power for the electrical plugs to keep the buses available to be started in cold weather, and lighting, plus whatever other elements are necessary to run an appropriate operation.
Dr. Braverman, you had something?
The town manager sent us all an email today, I think everybody got it, about the cost and when are we going to pay $2 million, no, $168,000?
Is that a couple of days ago?
No. April 2nd, yes.
A couple of days ago, yep. So we are, we're still in, and I met with Carol since then, and we're still in the same pattern where she's just sending out the invoices as she's receiving them. There's no expectation of anything happening at this moment. And as far as we all know, we're waiting for the insurance check to cover all the bills that are in right now. Mrs. Dros?
Are we definitely putting the buses back there? I'm just curious. I mean, I hear we need to put lights in, we need to put electricity, but are we definitely, my understanding was that may not be where the buses even are going. So I'm just curious.
Right now, we have nowhere else to put them. The town council has today, late this afternoon, asked for a joint meeting to discuss that very topic. They've made it very clear that they want that space to do the staging for the town hall. We've been in discussion with them, asking them to provide support to find somewhere else for the buses to go, either in the short-term, short-term or forever, because they simply have to go somewhere.
And I did ask the town manager where, and the response I got was not my problem. If the property were to be used by the town for staging, I did ask the town manager if there was somewhere else, and the response I got was not my problem. So I don't know if the town is willing to help you find another spot.
But we've been working with them to try to move forward and, you know, my comments to them have been if they need the space, they need to help us get somewhere else because we can't do that on our own. We just don't have operational funds to put buses somewhere else, whether it's a lease or a purchase or whatever it is. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So, all right. I'm having a rash to that statement because I've witnessed with the town council and everything that, in the dialogues that I've been privileged to have, a lot of collaboration going on. So to hear that the town manager had that kind of a response, it doesn't feel right. Has anybody else heard that comment from the town manager? All right. So it was a dialogue between yourself and the town manager?
Mr. Sylvia, if this is going to devolve into asking Dr. Collins about his conversations versus moving the discussion forward, I'm going to ask you to just stick on the topic.
I just don't understand why a comment is made in that manner when we've been working very well with the town council. So I, I'm just confused.
Mrs. Dros?
Okay. I'm not on the committee that does, with the building committee, whatever that would be called. I know that's not what it's called. So right now, the buses are at the high school. Is it taking up property, you guys probably would be better to answer this, property that is needed for kids to park at?
Some of the buses are at the high school.
But the mini ones are still here?
No, not just those. So approximately 2/3 of the fleet is at the high school. And yes, it is taking up space that is needed for the high school students to have to park somewhere else. So they cannot stay there.
One of the other major issues is that, starting in the fall, marching band will have nowhere to go, and we don't have another space that we can provide them. So that runs into another issue. Ms. Teve?
And we've made accommodations so that if there's no more parking spots in the regular student lot, they're allowed to park in the National Honor Society lot regardless of whether you're actually National Honor Society or not. So right now, it's been working out well. I mean, it gets kind of difficult because you have to park far away from the entrances, but for now, I think it's working.
Mr. Jakomos?
Just a couple of other events that I've been contacted about, what are we going to do about parking? One is the Scholars Breakfast in May, where we'll have at least 300 cars coming just from that. And that alone would fill the student parking lot. And also Park and Rec's called about their Father's Day soccer tournament, wanting us, wanting to find out if we could get the buses off-site to facilitate their tournament that's coming up. And, you know, this has ripple effects down to other organizations that are, you know, the expectation of the high school being available and with the resources it typically has to support other functions. So I know we've, I believe, rescheduled something that's for tomorrow already because we couldn't handle the parking load on it. And I'm sure there will be other modifications to schedules and what we will say no to as a result of this because right now, that is taking away half the space for the student parking lot. It will completely compromise the marching band program for next year if that's still in place starting September, or if we have to put additional vehicles there. So it's a matter of what are really the priorities that we need to stand for and be able to be most supportive of, you know, between the board and the town.
Mr. Plord?
I have a question. And I don't know the information surrounding it, so forgive me if it's not 100% possible in any manner, but is there any way to speak with other places around the high school, like the VA Hospital, like St. Mary's, like the ice skating rink, to use their parking accommodations in some capacity for these large events that go on at the high school if the buses are not able to be moved for, you know, the Scholars Breakfast, for example?
That certainly is possible. There is also the logistics support. If we have, say, all parents or guests for the Scholars Breakfast need to park at the VA Hospital, are we going to expect all of them to walk down to the high school? And if it's bad weather day, that's not really, we can cross our fingers and hope it'll be a nice day. But if it's not a nice day, what is our contingency plan? And at the time, the Scholars Breakfast is ramped up, essentially all of our bus drivers are on the road taking kids to and from school. So we have, you know, limitations on what our resources are. So we have to look at all these elements and really, timing is critical for what we can and can't do.
Thank you. Dr. Braverman?
Lou, are we prevented from using St. Mary's parking just for special events like the Scholars Breakfast?
We don't have any invitation or, you know, support to do anything there at this time.
Right. We asked them, and they said no. It wasn't possible. They have things going on there now. They have things going on inside the building now, so they need their parking.
Are there any other further questions or discussion on the remediation project? Mr. Sylvia?
Do you have a tentative date or idea when the town council wanted to have a joint session to discuss this?
I was emailing back and forth with Sophie today. She was going to discuss with them Thursday, April 19th. I'm not sure when it's going to happen.
I just didn't know, sort of. I just didn't know, sort of, okay, thank you.
Yep. So, you know, as soon as the town council gets back on dates that they're available, you know, everyone will, will be informed. Moving on to discussion regarding the payment agreeing, agreement regarding the investigator that the town hired, nothing has changed in the week since we discussed this fully. After our meeting, I did send an email out to the town manager and the majority leader to tell them about our discussions. I didn't want them to hear through the rumor mill that we were refusing to pay or something like that, although we have not taken any formal action to pay, just for any auditors. I, I didn't get a response back. Of course, everyone's busy doing other things, so this is clearly something that's on the back burner for them. I don't foresee any issue. If anything arises out of it, I will inform the board thusly, or Dr. Collins will, and this is something that I think can, we can just set aside until after July 1st potentially. I don't have any questions or comments on that? Wonderful. Next is a discussion of our 2018, 2019 budget. Also, really not a lot to update on here. There have been continued communications with the town council. They had their public hearing last night where the majority of members just wanted NCTV to get their money back. There are a few people who spoke in favor of the board having money restored or kept where it is, and a few residents who discussed their disdain with the high tax increase, and a few others who are just furious at the state for causing this enormous hole. If we all don't realize, it's $3.1 million. The state is not funding that was expected money for the town, so it's a huge hit on, on any budget. You know, I don't envy the town counselors. In my discussions, and I'm sure all of you have, have potentially talked to other people as well, it is incredibly unclear where the council is going to wind up. I don't think they're going to stay at 6.1% overall for the town budget. I don't know if they're going to stick at 3.5% for us, if they're going to cut it a lot to the point where we're in a big hole, or a little where we can make things work so it's, it doesn't have a huge impact on us next year. They don't have a good idea of where they're going, and they didn't shed any light on that at the public hearing last night. That being said, Dr. Collins and Mr. Jacobowitz have been working to identify anything at all that we could use to get down to 3.5, if that is the level. You know, we went through the budget pretty closely when we passed it on, so there's not a ton of other spots. I would say there's an expected $100,000 in what we call breakage from teachers who are either leaving or retiring, and the vast majority of that money is from people who signified that after the date of our transmittal. So that will be an easy adjustment of some kind, which I've shared with some of the town counselors. So there are some easier ways, and then there's going to be some tough choices again that we'll have to make. Does anyone have any questions or comments or anything? I don't, you know, I don't, I don't really know where else to go with that discussion. I thought we were going to have a little more insight after last night, moving forward. Mr. Jacobowitz, if you have something?
Just the only thing I really want to add on this is, early on, you know, in the forecasting and the assessments I was making of the overall budget and where we could go, where we couldn't go, I was pretty confident that we would have to make tough decisions on anything below 4% that we got from the town, and that has not changed. There's been no real structural changes in our operation. There's been no changes that have permanent consequences for us that would be beneficial financially. So when we start crossing the line of 4% to 3.5 or even lower, depending on where things go, those will be very difficult choices this year. And it will not be really something where we have a magic bag of tricks to be able to create ways of doing certain things without being a direct impact on something else. This will be, you know, definitely where priorities will rule, and the things that are even just slightly behind, the first priority may not make it. So.
Mrs. Dros?
Josh, this is a question for you. So let's say we, they come back, we have to cut. What is the next process for us? Like, I've been relooking at the budget. My children came in and saw it strewn on the floor. They're like, oh, mom's having a moment. So what is our role at that point?
They set the final dollar amount, and then our responsibility is to make adjustments to meet that dollar amount. That is what our agenda is on April 18th. It is only two days, it is two days after they set their final budget. This is not going to be one of those times where there's a, a deal cut where we know, you know, or the chair, whoever knows exactly what's going to be cut when they're striking some deal with the town council, as those, that's kind of what happened my first couple of years on the board, because it kind of went in the middle of where the board wanted an adjustment and where it came in. No matter what, at this point, there's going to be difficult choices for the board. I don't believe we have to make those adjustments by April 18th. We don't have, don't we, isn't there normally like another week or so after that to set our final budget? I know there's other, there's, there's certain parameters around how much time we have. My preference is to set it on April 18th finally, but in years past, we've added additional meetings.
Yes. It's now locked in tight on April 18th or whatever that point is, but many of the decisions based on the adopted budget need to be, you know, starting in the implementation process. We have recruiting to do, like, even if we have a half dozen vacancies that need to be filled, we have to start the process because we're competing with all the other districts. If that is allowed to linger as a decision where we have no certainty about where we're going for next year's setup, especially of staffing, it becomes very difficult to recruit the candidates you want if you're getting a six-week, you know, delay before you can act on it.
The, the other kind of strict mark that we have to finalize everything is that in the event the town council went the way that we don't want it to go, and we got to a percent where we didn't believe that we could meet without laying off teachers like we did last year, May 1st is the deadline for sending out notice that there can be a layoff. So, and, and again, I'm, I, I don't believe, I really hope we're not going to get to that point, but we don't really know where the town council is going to wind up. Right now, 3.5%, that wouldn't be something that we would have to do. Mrs. Dros?
So theoretically, let's say I had this, like, idea, hey, let's cut, blah, blah, blah. I'm not going to say what my thoughts are. Would I bring that up on the 18th? Would I send that to you now? Would I send that to, or do I just shut up until then?
It is, it is similar to the first go-around when we got down to our 4.57, where if anyone has any brilliant ideas, please send them along both to myself and Dr., or non-brilliant ideas, any ideas.
I never said brilliant. I just said I had some ideas.
Send them on if you want me to vet the idea before asking our administration to take time out of their day to see if it's viable and, and how that impacts things, please feel free to do so. The more time that anyone has to look at ideas, just like the first time around, the more information we can get to make a good decision, you know, that's probably the best answer I can give. Don't inundate me with 600 ideas, though. Mr. Sylvia?
All right. You're in receipt of my email that I sent to you with the...
Yes, I am.
The wild thought. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion or anything on this? We'll try to continue to keep you guys informed if there's anything newsworthy. You know, right now, there just, there just hasn't been. Did you have anything else on budget-related stuff? Okay. Moving on to item F on our agenda, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Again, our phones are open. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, Mr. Plord, you had your hand up at the very beginning, and I waited to call you. Did you have something? Okay. I'm so sorry about that. Public participation, our phone lines are open at 860-665-8736. We will just give it a moment and let someone interrupt Paul afterwards. We'll start with board remarks, and we'll pick up a phone. We'll go to Mrs. Dros first because Paul thought he was going up. All set. Mr. Branda?
Just really quick, thanks to Lou and Dr. Collins for working with Project Graduation on finding a spot that it sounds like is going to work for everything that they need to do, so thank you for that. They were very grateful.
Mr. Tuftel?
I'd just like to congratulate the Drama Club and the music for the fine play that they put on at the high school. Thank you.
Ms. Teve? Mr. Plord? Mr. Sylvia?
I'll follow their lead. I'm set.
Ms. Stam? Mr. Vasella?
Just, I attended the Ruth Chafee PTO meeting last night, and there was concern over the budget, and a discussion went on, so folks are worried.
Dr. Braverman?
Well, I'm hopeful, besides my magic wand, that we'll be able to, you know, when the going gets tough, we'll be creative and be able to figure out ways to keep the levels the way we want them to be, current, and keep our education high. So, well, I'll work on my magic spells.
I went to an E-Green PTO on Monday. They shared similar concerns. They were appreciative of, you all know, I did, as I said I would, and sent a letter out to our school community trying to just give them facts of what's going on. The comments from the parents weren't about my stylistic writing, which I thought, you know, was, was good, but they did say that them and everyone that they've, because if you're an elementary school parent, you know, you know, you guys know, everyone talks to everyone around town constantly about anything going on, and it sounded like, and I don't know if they were just being nice because I was there, but it sounded like they appreciated just having something in writing from our body. So I don't want to send weekly updates, and I certainly won't do that, but when important things are going on, I think, you know, we'll try to potentially maintain that because it's better to have real information and facts than trying to get your sourcing from elsewhere. So I hope that everyone enjoys the rest of their week. I'll see them in two weeks, if not sooner, and thank you all for your work tonight. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn by Mr. Branda, seconded by Mr. Tuftel. In favor? All in favor? Aye, and we are adjourned at 8:24. Thank you.